Good to have each and every one of you here today. We'll talk more about that in just a moment when we do that. But we're going to open with a prayer and then the pledge to the flag. One of our members, Mr. Carter, Mike Carter, he's not going to be here today. They had to rush a family member to the hospital this morning and he's at the hos- it's his mama's who it is. And he's asked for prayer from the community for her health. So he's not going to be here. And then Mr. Quinn is on his way. He should be here shortly by the time we get our meeting. If we'll all stand please, I'll ask Supervisor Tatum to open in prayer and Supervisor Mitchell to lead the pledge to the flag.
Good to see everyone here today. Let's go to the Lord in prayer at this time. Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we come to you today, Lord, just thanking you for all you do for us. Lord, we thank you for the many blessings of life and we thank you for this opportunity to be here today and discuss the business of our beautiful county. Lord, I pray that everything that's said and done here today will be pleasing in your sight and according to your precious will. Lord, we want to ask you for wisdom and guidance and leadership and everything that we say and do. In Jesus' most holy and precious name I pray and ask it all. Amen.
Okay, as I've already stated, it's good to have each and every one of you here. It's good to see your interest in your community. Today, the purpose of this meeting is for the board to talk about where we're at and hopefully, at the close of this meeting today, some of these rumors that are going around can be quietened because a lot of them are rumors. We're going to, two things that the board that's here that we will be talking about. The first one is going to be about the schools and the composite index number and why we're here and where we got to this point. And then the second is going to be about the reassessments. So with that being said, so I'll start, I'll start it out with a little bit of a narrative of what's going on. In our last meeting, the board asked me as chair to meet with the school board and to talk about this composite index number or the LCI number that's come out. What that is, is it's based upon your ability to pay. In the state, the school's got $109 million budget. This federal government pays, I've got the breakdown to it if anybody wants to see it. I'll give it to the press so that they can see it. The numbers, it's roughly, let's just do it this way and take care of it to begin with, These are the dates as of Wednesday, January the 10th. The federal government is paying $21.259 million towards the school budget. The state is paying $50.733 million and the county, the local, you and I are paying $37.9 million, making a total budget of $109.2 million. That's the total budget. The state's saying that the county can pick up $3.7 million and they're going to refuse to pay it. And that's where these numbers are coming up. Now, the budget is set for this year. It's next year. Now, last week, last week I was in Richmond. I talked to our delegates, I talked to our senators, and I talked to a lot of others. Franklin County is not the only jurisdiction in the Commonwealth of Virginia that is facing this. There's others as well. We do not know, this is where, when I left last week in Richmond, they're saying that it could be, could be, could be delayed for a year, maybe two, but the county was going to have to deal with this shortfall. And so that's where it is. It's coming up with that. So with that being said, we met with the school board and the supervisors. We had a list of things that we talked about and the list, you all, I'm going to tell you at that meeting, at that meeting, it was Mr. Worley, Dr. Sears, and their finance director. And on our side was Mr. Whitlow, Ryan, our finance director. Mr. Carter asked if he could go. I said, yes, and myself. I was at that meeting. And the list of things that they asked us to talk to them about, and we talked about in that meeting, we talked about the potentially, potentially closing of schools, the potentially busing, how that was working out, potentially using the Jero Center as the new technical And we talked about, we talked about the LCI number, the 3.7 million shortfall, and the carryover funds that they have, which is $1.2 million. That was pretty much everything y'all asked me to do, wasn't it? And that's what, that's what I got on my list here that we talked about was on that. So with that being said, if there's anything done, I'll tell you this now, if there's anything done with the schools, that's going to be the school board's decision. The board of supervisors, we've got to hear what that is first before we know one way or the other which way it's going to happen. We've got to hear from them on that. The 3.7 million dollars, if we have to pay all of that, then that's going to come from the taxpayers, you all. That's where that'll come from. And now, I know, I know that there's a lot of people think that the county's got some money. We do. And it's based upon from our, at any time you need to step in, Mr. Whitlow, you helped me there, it's based upon our financial advisors. We've got roughly about four months operating money set back. If the county were to go up, it's about four months, that's what it is, to run the county. And the reason that we've got the bond rating that we've got, capital double A, one small A, we're just one step away from a three, triple A rating, that means that we can borrow money at a cheap rate if we have to do that. And so that's why that money's there. That's not, that's not a pocket of money that can be spent. If the county goes up, we need that money to, for operating expenses for about four months. And that's where we stand with it. Now, these are round figures. We can give you right down to the date, Mr. Whitlow can, Mr. Ryan Carter can, down to it, but that's roughly where we stand with that. So at this time, I've given you, today, today is not going to be any public comment. The floor is not going to be open for public comment. We can have all the public comments you want, your three minutes on the Tuesday, the 20th, six o'clock when we open it up for public hearing and then public comment. And we'll listen to everybody, they'll get, you'll get your three minutes at that time. But today, we're just wanting to try to put some rumors away on where we're at with the schools and with the reassessment. So with that being said, I've said my, I've given you an overview of what's going on and I'm going to open the floor to any of the supervisors. I'll start right here with Vice Chair, Mr. Tatum, and then we'll alternate back and forth that way.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, let me say that as far as school closures are concerned, I'm against closing any school, period. I know that's a school's decision, school board decision, but as for me, I'm against closing any schools. In fact, I have voiced that several times. I met with Dr. Sears a while back. And one project that we've been looking at for several years is the CTE building at the high school, which is a pretty extensive program, one that is needed in Franklin County to help our kids when they graduate high school.
Can I stop you for just a second?
Sure.
We've got to do this, we need to read this motion. Mr. Quinn's on the way, so he's not going to do it remotely, but we still need to take care of it in case he wants to call in, so I'll entertain a motion for that.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, as authorized by Title 2.2, Chapter 37 of the Code of Virginia, I move to allow the remote participation of Supervisor Dan Quinn by telephone for today's meeting as he is unable to physically attend due to a personal matter which is out of state travel.
I need a second. Mr. Jameson, second. Madam Clerk, we do a roll call, please.
Supervisor Jameson?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. I'm sorry, Tim, for interrupting you, buddy.
That's okay. All right, thank you. Back, the CTE program at the high school is one that I thoroughly support because not all of our children when they graduate high school, not all of them go to college. And if, with the CTE program, we're able to provide them a trade that enables them, once they leave high school, they can get a good paying job and be able to support themselves and work here, hopefully here locally in Franklin County. With that said, I voiced to Ms. Dr. Sears and other school board members that as far as I'm concerned, if they close any schools, I'm going to no vote on any new construction in Franklin County. I cannot justify in good faith building a new school when we close existing schools. That's where I'm, I'm at on that. With that said, with the funding shortfall that was created by an antiquated system that the state decided to hit us with this year, and I still don't understand it, our state representative in Richmond said that we have a better propensity to pay, better ability to pay than Loudoun County, Virginia, which is the richest county in America. That just doesn't make sense. I'm not, I'm not an economic professor by any stretch of imagination. I didn't study economics in school, but common sense tells you that Franklin County, Floyd County, got hit hard. And to compare us and say that we have a better propensity to pay, a higher level than, than some of these larger counties in Northern Virginia and places that have a whole lot more resources than we do is just ludicrous. But this is a hand that we've been dealt with. As for me, I'm against closing any schools. I know the school board are looking into their budget to see what cuts they can do and where they can streamline. I support them in streamlining everything they can. At the end of the day, if they still come up short, I support this board looking into reserve funds if we need to, to support our schools, to get them over this hump until the state can get their act straightened out. I hope, we can't use reserve funds for permanent solution because it's not permanent money. Once it's gone, it's gone. But we could use reserve funds if we need to, to get us through this year's budget. And if the state drags their feet and don't fix this in time, if we have to tap into it next year, that would, that would still be possible. Like I said, that's one-time money. It's not a permanent solution, but it would buy us some time and keep our schools open because I'm against having to bus our children all over Franklin County to all these different schools when there's no need to. We just need to tighten up and see what we need to do as citizens of Franklin County to do what's best for our schools. Henry School is one of them on the chopping block, and that's in my district. I went to Henry School as a child, and my children went to Henry School, and I hope someday my grandchildren go to Henry School. That's how committed I am to keeping these schools open. I think that's our duty, that's our responsibility, not only to our children, but our children's children and the future that we have here in Franklin County. We have a good school division. We have a good people, this is a good community. I've lived here all my life. I've worked here all my life. I'm proud to say I'm from Franklin County. And, you know, it, it really bothers me when we get dictated to from people in Richmond that say they know that we can pay, we can afford to pay more, all because of timing of, of when this local composite index report came out, and they, they try to say we, we have ability to pay more money. They don't realize that the pressure that they're putting on the localities. Unfortunately, that's, that's a game the state likes to play. We're required in Franklin County to have a balanced budget. And every year we pass a budget, we have a balanced budget. The state of Virginia is also required to have a balanced budget. Unfortunately, they like to balance their budget with projects that they won't see funded. They like to send them to us here locally and make us pay for them.
Unfunded mandates.
Unfunded mandates. And I've been on the board now for eight years. When I came on the board eight years ago, we had a stack about like that. Now we've got, what, three, three-ring binders full?
Three hundred and seventy something.
More, more and more every year that the state likes to push off on us. And we're at the bottom of the line. We can't push it off. And they tell us we have to do it. So that kind of puts us between a rock and hard place. That's where I'm at on schools. We've given some alternate plans. I mentioned some ideas that I've had for a long time, and these are just my ideas. This is coming from Tim. This is not a board endorsed idea, not. I have always had issues with sixth graders being at the middle school. I think they should be kept back at the elementary school. We keep hearing that our elementary schools are too small, looking at closing them because they're too small. Okay, we have a remedy for that. Let's put our sixth graders back, give them the close attention that they'll get from an elementary school teacher that they need. Also, we looked at some ideas, and like I said, this is my opinion, not a board opinion, this is my opinion. We need this career and technical center. An option we have is converting the Jero Center, building that's already there. We can convert it and make it the career and technical center. If we have to add to it, we can add to it and save the county millions of dollars in new construction and get a good, solid program to where we're training our students and teaching them a trade that can help them get a job and be able to provide for themselves and their families. Another idea that's been floated around, and, 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 this is not my idea, this comes from, they're looking at some busing changes and things. I have my opinions there. They've looked at single busing versus dual busing. That's up to them. I'm not real fond of the idea of having kindergarteners and 12th graders on the same bus. That's just my opinion. Some other ideas the school's looking at, they're looking at a four-day work week to try to cut out some of the operation costs because of four-day work week. We cut about 20% some roughly in operations. So their, the school board is working hard to come up with some, with some solutions. And for me, I feel that if, once they put in their due diligence and work to find these cuts that they can make, then if they still come up short, I feel as far as we're, as far as I'm concerned, this board needs to, in that case, reach into our reserves, give them the funding they need to keep these schools open, keep them going until the state gets this worked out. Mr. Chairman, are we talking about assessments yet or we just don't?
No, just, just schools right now.
Okay. That's where I'm at on school closure. Like I've said, and I've told many of you that have contacted me, I am totally against closing any schools, period. That's just, that's me, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mitchell.
Well, of course, I would rather be sitting here talking about building schools than I had closing them, but I will not. Everyone has opinions and I'll keep mine, and what, that's the school board's job. It's my job to look after the funding and taxes for the taxpayer, and it's been made evidently clear to me this past week that Franklin County residents are worried about what their tax dollars will be. The drop in ADM in schools is no surprise. It's been, it's going across the nation. It's not just a Franklin County problem. And the problem we have here now isn't the board of supervisors' fault and it's not the school board's fault. The drop in the LCI, I don't think there's a person in this room that would agree it is, that it's, that it is unfair, but to say that it is unfair also means it would be unfair to pass that burden on to the taxpayer. Because I don't, the state's saying we have $3.7 million, and I don't feel that the people in my district have that. Like I say, it's nobody's fault, but at the end of the day, the drop in ADM has to be addressed, and I'm not going to get involved in how the school board wants to handle that. I will say, I do not want to see them get in a rush doing something and it affect our children's education. I think they're doing good work finding solutions and see what they come up with, and if they come back to us and we need to help them bridge a gap temporarily, bridge a gap. I think that should come from a reserve fund, but under that, I'm here to look after my, my constituents' tax dollars, and that's what I'll do.
Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for coming out this afternoon. This is exactly what needs to happen. This is your community. These are your tax dollars, and it's just, it's heartwarming for me to see you come out. These issues are very difficult. I'm going to take a step back and go back to last year. The school board commissioned a facility study that they did, and I believe they discussed it in their meetings last fall. Well, the facility study yielded results that recommended school closures as a result of decreasing ADM. And that is not a fun topic to broach with the school board and with the parents and families of Franklin County. So then we get to the end of December and we are notified of the local composite index decrease at $3.7 million. This is a devastating number for our locality. The local composite index formula, as it is, as it is today, is flawed, and I will tell you why it's flawed. It is primarily based on property values, sales, and ADM. And none of us can look at the decrease in ADM as being something that we don't all acknowledge and know is a real factor. So we can't argue with that. The, the property assessments we'll talk about later, but what is not calculated in this formula is the amount of free and reduced lunches that we have by percentage in our county, nor is land use countered into this formula. So my position is let's really talk about what the affordability of the county is, given what the county is, how we function, and what the demographics are. The formula doesn't do that. The General Assembly has acknowledged that the formula is flawed, and it's going to take an act of, act of Congress, quite frankly, to, to try to get that formula visited and to get it amended. We, as a locality, I believe my colleagues up here, we are going to stay on this topic. The formula's got to be fixed, and the formula is reviewed every two years. So we're stuck with this. So this $3.7 million deficit isn't just for this year. And so therein enters, you know, you've got the facility study and then you've got the drop in LCI, and the school board has some very, very difficult decisions to make. The decisions on whether our school board closes schools, alters bus schedules, or what have you, or goes to a four-day work week, those decisions need to stay with your elected body, the school board. We are your two elected bodies. We, as a board of supervisors, we support our school division. I think you're hearing that. I am one of the two liaisons that's been working with the schools for four years since I got elected. And we realize the value of excellence in education and supporting our teachers and our children. The drop in ADM now probably going on, I'm going to guess, maybe seven or eight years. I'm not going to get that number right. That drop, absolutely, if you can put yourselves for a minute, just in the shoes of looking at a business that says, we, we had 1,000 employees, but we've lost 500. And so we've lost 500 employees, and now, what do the people that are writing the checks for that business, what do they have to do? They can't keep funding their operations at a level of 1,000 employees. They have to figure out how to run their operations efficiently for 500 employees. So that is an analogy, I think, of what the school board has got to do, is they've got to understand how they can realign their operations with 1,000 less children in our school system, and that is no easy task. I'm glad I'm not on the school board. I've been on the school board where I used to live, and I get it, I've sat on both sides of the table. And this board is going to support our school board. We have a wonderful working relationship with our board. We're going to discuss today about trying to bridge this near-term deficit of $3.7 million, but this is just the beginning of the conversation. And this deficit's going to be with us for a while. And so if the county, because I've had some people say, why don't you all, you all have healthy, you know, reserves? Just, just give the school board the money and let's keep all the schools open. Well, we can do that maybe one time. We, you know, but then that money's gone. And we have a fiscal responsibility as a board of supervisors to make sure your tax dollars are comprehensively managed and expended in a way that meets the needs of all citizens of Franklin County, and the schools are very, very important. We all know that. So this is a very difficult place the state has put us in, but we also know in a parallel sense that we, as a county and the school board governing the school division, at some point in time, and the time is now, we've got to look at, how do we really look at how we're operating as a school division to spend taxpayer dollars in a way that responds to these decreased student numbers? And we might end up maybe coming out with more efficiencies than we realize. I don't know. I don't know what that's going to look like. So I'm not going to offer my position. I don't like the idea of closing schools, that, that is a very adverse consequence. But I don't know what options the school board has. They presented some options to us in early January, and I applauded them for being brave enough and studious enough to bring us options. They've already been thinking about how to address this. So none of us want to close a school, but we all have to support the school board and we all have to make sure that we're all focused on the health and welfare of our children at the end of the day, and our teachers, our families. Family disruption with closing schools is significant. I get it. We're just in a period of some very difficult decisions that both of your elected bodies are going to have to make. And I personally, and I think my board will support me in this, we want to make them together and we want to make them with you. And it's, it's just my hope that we can understand each other, that we can provide information to help you understand where we sit. The school board likewise can talk about their position and their perceptions and responsibilities so that we can all understand, we're all in this together, folks. We all have the same pot of taxpayer money, and we all have a huge commitment to our schools and our children. And I am going to work with and support the school board as they work through this, the, all of these issues. We've asked the state to hold us harmless for a year, basically pushing the pause button, giving us a year or two before this comes into play. And I want our school board in the optimal position of having adequate time to make these decisions, to explore the options, to talk to the families, to work. They're going to need adequate time, not in a rushed sense, with these options that have very adverse consequences to our families. So that's my desire, is for the General Assembly to do their due diligence and that our board, I hope, will support getting the schools over the hump with a decision today. And then we need to all roll our sleeves up and work together and support the school board. So thank you.
Ms. James.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Ms. Smith, just like she said, the numbers are there, whatever, any way you look at it. The way it is right now, the school cannot sustain itself going on like it is. They've got some tough decisions to make. The ADM, I think, I understand, started declining in 2008. It's been going down for the last 15 years. Their consultants, Evergreen, says in the next 10 years, I believe, to expect another 450, 75 students decline in enrollment then. Like I said, it's going to be some tough decisions that have got to be made. The school has them from their consultants. They got their report back in June. I'm a little concerned, we didn't find out about it until January in hearing this, but it is what it is. I don't want to see schools closed. Nobody wants to see change. I don't like changing them on anybody else, but we got to look at where we at today. Things are changing, we're going to have to change with them, is the way I see it. That's about all I got to say.
Thank you, board, for that. I'll give you, I'll give you my two cents now. I really get aggravated and frustrated, and I know you do too. It, well, the proper word, the proper word is it makes me angry. I look, I look at Washington, federal government, Richmond state government, and then Franklin County as local government U. The Washington and Richmond government, in their eyes, to me, it's like buying a baseball cap. One size fits all. And that's not true. They need to let the local government take care of local government. Mr. Tatum, a while ago, the richest county in the Commonwealth of Virginia, this LCI number does not- number does not affect them, but yet Richmond is saying that because of who we are, where we're at, and the folks that we have here, that we can afford to pay more. Now, all of this money is tax dollars. It's whether it's federal, state, or local dollars. It's all your money. It come out of your pocket and my pocket. And I believe if Washington and Richmond would let everybody here alone, us alone, you all, we could do a better job than they're doing, because they're wasting, in my opinion, more money than this $3.7 million every day, especially in the federal government. But with that being said, I'm going to be very open-minded, I'm going to be very open-minded in my comments. I want to wait and hear from the experts at the school board. And I do know with the numbers that I have here, that's coming from the numbers, and these are, okay, and these here are open numbers. In 2006, 2007, there was approximately 7,305 students in Franklin County. 2003, 2024, this is the latest number, there's 5,790 students in Franklin County schools. So those numbers have come down significantly. I do know for a fact, based upon the numbers that we have been getting, that the only school system in our area, and when I say "our" area, it is the areas that touch and join Franklin County, Bedford, Floyd, Roanoke County, Pennsylvania County, even down into, all the way out to Montgomery County, the only school system that is paying more per student to educate is Roanoke City. Our teachers are doing a good job. Our school board is doing a good job. The decisions for closing schools, the decisions for going along with, you know, probably the only thing that I'm willing to say that if it comes out that I'm not going to like, I don't think that a kindergartner should be on the same bus as a high school student. I think they need to be kept separated as far as I'm open-minded to anything else that they come up with. Some of these proposals that have come out there, from closing schools to putting sixth graders back in elementary schools, to taking the Juro Center and making it into the CTE, I'm open-minded for everything, for all of that. And I look forward to anxiously waiting and hearing what the school board has to say. The ultimate decision lies with the school board. It lies with them, with their, they're the ones that deal with this every day. And we have to wait and listen to their expertise, and I do know that from my meeting with them this week, those people are working hard at it. They're laboring. It's one of those deals when you make five people happy, you make 10 people mad, because everybody has their opinion about their children, and we do, too. Listen, Burn Chimney School opened in 1952. That's when that school started. That's what the thing, I went to school there as a child, '56, '57, '58, long in there, and then I went to school there. Been there, you know, in the community. It's tough. They got some tough decisions, and it's like I said a while ago, some people's going to be upset, some people's going to be happy, and then some people, it's just going to, whatever happens, happens. But folks, it is incumbent upon you and I, as a community, to pull together and to support each other. It's okay to have your opinions. That's a wonderful thing, but at the end of the day, we need to be able to sit down and eat a sandwich together, not be mad. We got to work together at this, because it's a community. In each and every one of us, we should have our community where we want it to be, and what's best. I mean, that's why we live in America. You know, we got homeschooling, all these problems why the enrollment is down. There's numerous problems there. You know, you got homeschooling, you got Christian Heritage, you got your private schools and all this, and I know some students, people here that go to North Cross, private schools over in Roanoke. That's your decision. That's there. But we got to work together. We've got to give everybody a chance, and we have to be, we've got to be really civil-minded and open-minded in what's going on. And that's how, that's my take on this. I'm going to be open-minded to hear what the schools have to say. Now, I understand that's why we did that motion there in just a moment, that Mr. Quinn, he's on the phone line, and, all right, so go ahead and get Mr. Quinn on the phone, please. So we need to be open-minded in everything. We've got to stall for a couple minutes to get it all hooked up there, but we got to work together. We got to work together. It's good for you to call your representative and talk to them, and if you go on the webpage for each district, you have the phone number there that you can call. I know you do on the county side, they're on the school side, too, I'm sure, that you can go on the webpage there and do that and talk to that. For myself, I know some people don't do emails and all of that. I don't do emails. I'll talk to you all day long on the telephone if you call me, but I'm not going to answer your email. I just don't do that. But I'll talk to you all day long on the telephone, and I answer my phone, and I'll return my call. So each one's got their own little way that they do their thing, so we have to be mindful of that. I know that, I guess you can say I'm old-school, and last week in that meeting, I was in a class, and they were talking and giving us instruction on email and stuff, and I said, "What's wrong with the telephone?" And the director, he said, "I like the telephone, too, Mr. Thompson," he said, and do that. So I guess it's just a generational thing on how that works. But we're going to take a couple-minute break, if y'all need to go get you something to drink or something, while they get it hooked up. And Mr. Quinn, he's going to join us by telephone. Mr. Carter was busy with his mom. He's not going to join us by phone, and he did ask for community prayer. Y'all keep his mom in prayers for her health. Couple-minute break. I'll let you know as soon as Mr. Quinn comes back on, and he tells us what's going on with him. Okay, Mr. Quinn's back. He's on the phone, and he'll get his time here in just a second. While we were on the break, there was another paper that was given to me that was asked to be read by one of the supervisors. In 2006 and '07, when the schools had the 7,305, and their employees that they had at that time, full-time employees, were 1,382. Today, with the about 1,500 less students, there's only four less employees. So their employees, their full-time equivalent was 1,378. When everything's open, if it's five or 25 in a classroom, the teachers and everything, the expenses to keep these schools open, that's what it is. That's the challenge that the school boards has to keep. That's all there, and so that's the challenge there. Mr. Quinn, good to have you with us on the phone. I hope you can hear me. Can you hear me fine? Mr. Quinn, can you hear me? Every time, and help. I'm sorry for the difficult. He's done, they done lost him already. This technology is wonderful, when it works, but we don't ever know when it works.
Access code or phone number you have dialed is incorrect. Please check your credentials and try again.
We'll give you one more try. If it don't work, we just...
Your call cannot be completed as dialed. Please consult your...
All right, we're just going to move on and go on to our next one and do it that a way. The next thing that we're going to deal with is reassessment. I know that each and every one of you, Madam Clerk, if you get him back, tell him that we've just moved on and the difficulty's going on, and we're sorry that it's worked out that way, and we will reserve him a space at the 20th to make his comment on that. Each and every one of you, I know in the last, well, this week, the last couple days, has gotten your reassessment. The Richmond says we have to do these so often. We do these, there are some jurisdictions that actually have assessors on their staff. Roanoke, I talked with Roanoke County, their county administrator last week while I was in Richmond, they've got eight people on staff, and they do this continually. Franklin County, we do it every four years, the reassessment. That's part of the reason that we've come up with this LCI, the local composite index number, where that came from Richmond, it's saying that we've got the ability, you have to pay more taxes, according to Richmond, whatever that means. So that comes up to that. Now, just because you all realize, and know, I'm sure you do, what drives the assessment up? Each and every one of us have heard the stories, and it's based upon what is called a comp. That means that a house in your area sold for X amount of dollars. I personally am aware of one that went on the market for around $200,000 at 12 o'clock on a Saturday. About 5 o'clock on that same Saturday, they had five bids, and that $200,000 price tag had went up to $240,000. That's why property values are up. Most everybody's property went up. Now, here's where I'm going to need some help from staff, from you all. You can go on to YouTube and hear the exact presentation that we heard right here in this room. It's all livestream. You, your property was based upon the comps that were sold in your area. And if I'm remembering correctly, y'all help me, Agnew said they had divided it up into 171 or 178 areas. In other words, what was it, 171?
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight, somewhere along in that area. What that means is, if you live here in Rocky Mountain, the value of your house is not going to be based upon what that house sold for in Faram, or what that house sold for at Westlake, at Hellsford Bridge, at any other. It was going to be right here in this area, so it's not going to be compared all over the county. Now, by law, when staff gets through, we will tell you what that rate is going to be based upon that. The rate will come down, folks. Your taxes are not going to be 55 or 60% higher. It will come down. We will post when that number is known, when it's got through. There are some properties in the county that came down, that didn't go up at all. So everybody's property, it went up. I'll tell you right up, the value of my property went up $104,000, and I did $20,000 improvement on a garage. So I would not sell my piece of property, my little farm, I would not sell it for what it appraised for. First off, I couldn't find another one to do it, but it went up $104,000. And I didn't bring a paper with me, but I'll show you. And so everybody's property went up, and the driver was the comps. I mean, you all know that. You take, you can remember 15 years ago, you could take a trip across this county, just say you went down 220 to Roanoke, you'd probably go by a half a dozen or more places for sale and pass how many houses with a car, a truck out front for sale. You can't do that today. That's why things are going up. This board had nothing to do with the prices of how much stuff went up, that appraisal. And it was, I got a complaint that we was using Wample or Neems. It's limited as to who you can use, because these companies are going out of business as well. And so that's how that works. And then I've heard the complaints that nobody come by my house. I didn't see anybody, nobody left anything. And then I've heard people say, "Oh, yeah, I talked to this man or that man, super nice guy, enjoy talking to him." They went in and looked around." So that's the rumors that we're hearing. So I'm going to do the same thing and leave comments to the end. That's just the open thing, and I'll do it that a way. And let's do it in reverse this time. Mr. James, you're first.
Make sure, just to clarify what you said. The rate is going to be set by us, and once we, and we can't do that until we get the budget in front of a staff, gives us a budget and where we got to go with it. But when Chairman Thompson said it's going to come down, the rate's going to come down, but we don't know what your tax is going to do. It may go up, you may pay more taxes, but like he said, you're not going to pay 35, 40, 50% as it is according to the property value. It's going to be based on the rate, but we cannot tell you right now, I can't sit here and tell you that you're not going to pay more taxes at this point. But we will set that rate and adjust it where we can after we get our budget and work on it.
Ms. Smith?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will tell you, my personal opinion is that these reassessment numbers are ridiculous. They are not sustainable for families in Franklin County. And as my colleagues have said, well, first of all, the exercise of the reassessment, this reassessment period, is capturing 2021 values. So it's comps, it's values, there's a couple components. When the assessors go out, they also use other sources of data, and that's why I've really encouraged our citizens to appeal, because you can sit down with the assessor one-on-one and make sure that everything that they're assessing you on is correct, whether your stated is having two bedrooms, you know, or three bedrooms, and you really have two, as an example. So that's what we're dealing with. The state code requires us to reassess every four years. It is state stipulated. It is also state stipulated that we go through an equalization process, which my colleagues have been talking about, which, as we go through our budget process next month, we will work between an equalized rate, when we get that number, and 61 cents. And given our budget work, listening to you, the public, we are going to bring that tax rate down. There's no question about that. We just don't know the number today. I can promise you that, well, as an example, there are, in my district, I've got some constituents with 150% increase, and this just kind of, it's really sobering to hear those kinds of numbers. And so we've got to work, roll our sleeves up on the Board of Supervisors, to manage our budget, and to manage our budget in a way where we can continue to provide services that you all pay your taxes for, while keeping in mind that we've got to maintain a county that you can live in, that you can afford to live in, and that taxation is not the reason you make a determination to leave Franklin County. It's not good for our businesses, it's not good for our residents. And we will be very vigilant through our budget work to know where we should set the tax rate. And I just ask that you bear with us. I do think the clarification and distinction that Chairman Thompson made about the assessment process, the Commissioner of Revenue's office, you know, a lot of this, you know, works through her office as a constitutional officer, and the assessors do their thing. And it takes about a year, all of 2023. And so the results are in and we have what we have, they're the numbers. So your Board of Supervisors, we enter the picture starting next month. We have the numbers, we know, you know, generally with hearing from all of you what they are. So that's information for us to understand that these rates, yes, they are absolutely off the chart, unimaginable. I mean, we were working with numbers we thought were gonna be in the 30 to 35% range some months ago. And that was high, in my opinion. And to hear that the average residential rate was gonna be 55%, unprecedented for this county. So we've got hard work to do, as the school board has hard work to do. But I want you to know that this board, and I think I could speak for my colleagues, we don't take this lightly. This stuff, I can tell you, is keeping me up at nights and I will guarantee you it's keeping my colleagues up at night. We've got to do the best thing we can for you. And we've got to also provide services. The county, I can promise you, the county's budget is as conservative and tight as a municipal budget can be. And I can tell you that because I've worked on it for four years. I'm a fiscal conservative. And we've got to be, our chief priority is to spend your money efficiently and transparently with a lot of accountability. And you have not had a real estate tax increase, as an example, for at least five years. So your county, it's just an example, that we are working very hard to live within the means of that 61 cent tax rate. And I hope that encourages you and gives you confidence that the county staff, the Board of Supervisors, we're all working to make sure we maximize the tax dollars that we have. And I want you to get to a point where you feel good about that. I know now's not the time. I think we are dealing with some very high emotional issues. I get it, my tax rate, I mean, excuse me, my reassessment went up 60 some percent. So we're all in this together again. But, you know, we're committed to working through this next month. And I'll close with saying that there will be public hearings next month. You're gonna have an opportunity through our monthly meetings to speak at public comment. And we will also have a public hearing on the proposed budget. We will have one on the reassessment and we will have one on the tax rate. So stay tuned to our website or call us. Let us know and we'll make sure you have those dates so that you can get your remarks and your comments on the county record through those public hearing opportunities. And you're also welcome to write us and ask our clerk for your comments to be made part of the formal record for the issues that we are gonna be dealing with. So again, I thank you all for coming out. And I hope some of what we're sharing with you today is enlightening and gives you an opportunity to kind of maybe understand some things that maybe you didn't understand before or gives a broader perspective. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
At the end of this, I'm gonna give you some phone numbers and some, Mr. Whitlow is gonna share with you the public comments and the schedule that we're gonna have, that you can actually come. At the end of this, we'll do that if you got your paper in there. Ms. Smith?
As I said, discussing the LCI, I don't feel that people in my district have the money to keep taking these things on. You go to adding up what your light bill is now, your insurance, and then you tack taxes on it and you spend them on pay. The rate will be decreased. We don't have the number yet, we don't know where to set it. We don't even know what it's gonna equalize at. Everyone's rate will be different depending on which, how you, how it went up and when it's equalized, how it all work out. But coming from me, the rate will be decreased. We're not gonna take all that money in taxes. There's too many people who can't afford it. And all these things have to be paid for. Schools and every other county department has to be paid for. But I understand where it comes from. And it wouldn't be fair to pass that on.
Mr. Tate?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Assessments, something none of us like, but it's a necessary evil. By Code of Virginia, by state law, we have to assess every so often. Franklin County, many, many years ago, elected to go every four years. Prime example, Roanoke County, they do it every year. That's something I think this board would be incumbent to look at because right now, the issue I've got, for the next four years, we're stuck at these crazy high assessments because of what the market has did in 2023. We're stuck there for four years. That's why I would like to see us look at the possibility, feasibility of maybe going to every two years or that way. If the market dropped tomorrow, we're still stuck at these high rates from last year where they made the assessment based on. I'd like to see us look at the possibility of adjusting how often we do assessments. Now, that comes with a cost. I would also like to look into the feasibility of opening our own assessment office here locally so that we're not having to contract someone from outside of Franklin County to come in and tell us how much our land is worth. If we have a local office here locally, they know how the sales are going in Franklin County. They know what an acre of land is worth in Franklin County. They know how much per square foot a house is valued at in Franklin County. Now, yes, they come in, Wamplin Eames come in, and they break the county down into 178 communities and they go in and they compare recent sales. My opinion, this recent sales that's gone on over the last three years are out of the norm. Seeing a house, in my neighborhood, there was a house that was assessed value at $140,000. Actually, $142,500 was the actual numbers on it. That house just sold for $313,000 just last fall. I guess where I'm at is should I have to pay more, should my assessment go up? Because they were lucky enough to find somebody willing to pay it. I'm, my thinking is that sale was not the norm, that's out of the norm. We need to have more local control over how our property is assessed. We need people that are here in Franklin County, people that, hopefully we can get accrue that if they work here, they live here. But we need people that know what an acre of land and a house is worth in Franklin County. Not just because the market is crazy high because of the housing shortage that's going throughout the country. Housing shortage came about, one reason, a couple of years ago. You know, we had a real serious supply chain issue across the country that made building houses hard. And house construction failed in many places. Well, that's not the norm, that is out of the norm. We need to have better control. We need to have people that are here and more familiar with what our land is worth, our houses are worth. Now, I noticed on my assessment, my land didn't go up in value. My house sure did. I saw one lady, her land actually went down in value. But her house more than doubled in value. I saw a guy that owns a mobile home, a single-wide mobile home on a four-acre tract that's assessed at $110,000. Now, I don't wanna sound, you know, and if you live in a mobile home, this is not a slur to you in any way. But I've never seen a mobile home worth $110,000. My thinking, this is abnormal. This is an abnormal market. This is not the norm. And so I'm gonna ask staff, we need to look into the feasibility of having our own assessment office here in the county. And I'd like for us to look into and see how we can benefit with going to assessments every two years so that we don't get stuck at these high rates. And plus, it cuts off these peaks that we have, these sharp increases. Roanoke County does every year, so they go up and down with the market. If the market drops, they drop. If the market goes up, they go up, they follow the market. Right now, where we do every four years, we see these huge increases and then we might go along. And then in 2008, some of you may remember, we saw a huge decrease in the housing market. Well, right now, we're stuck up here. And I'm saying that's not the norm. We need to establish what's normal for this community. And I don't know the answer, but I think we can do it better here locally with our own assessment office. And I wanna, I think we need to look into it. I think we need to look into that because my assessment went up almost 60%. My dad's 88 years old and I had to explain to him how his assessment went up almost 60%. He's been retired for 30 some years. Him and mom can't afford that. And neither, and they shouldn't, and neither are you. We know we have got to adjust the rate down. We don't know how far down we can go with it until we see the budget. We don't know what the budget requests are, we don't know what our needs are, we don't know, you know, we don't know what the sheriff's needs are, we don't know what public safety. We don't, we know the school's been talking about maybe having to close schools. We don't know there are other needs. So we don't know what the budget's gonna look like. Until we see the budget, we can't set the tax rate. But I can promise you one thing. For me, it won't be a dime more than it has to be because I don't like paying taxes. I'm semi-retired. I worked for almost 30 years for the Sheriff's Department. But I still work full-time at Faram College. I still know what it's like to work. And I know my colleague here, Ms. Smith, said that she stays up, loses a lot of sleep at night. I work midnight, so I'm up all night anyway. So I have a lot of time to think about it. And, you know, I don't take it lightly. We need to do what's right. And we need to do what's right for our community. And I think we need to look into these options of local assessments and assess them more often so that we don't get hung out to dry with these crazy high numbers. You have my word, I'm gonna do everything I can to get the rate as low as we can get it. I wish I could give you a solid number today, but can't because we don't know what the budget looks like. But it's gonna be a substantial 61 cents, we're gonna come way down from that, I can tell you that because these assessments are just crazy. They're just crazy. I never dreamed I would see assessments go up like that. But, you know, that's what we get paid the big bucks for. We gotta roll up our sleeves and get in here and make the tough decisions and do what we feel is best for our community. And we, for me, I take a great deal of responsibility and pride for the fact that I live in Franklin County, I love Franklin County. And if any of you that know me know that I've always been active in my community and working in Franklin County. And I'm gonna do everything I can to make sure that we keep these tax rates down to where we're not putting such a burden on our citizens. You know, that's where I'm at, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, folks, I'll make my comments and my comments are not gonna be any different from what the rest of them have said. The rates will be adjusted. We do not know what the rate's gonna be because we don't know what the numbers are yet. These guys are working, they even working as hard as they can to get that, the rate, what the rate, the rate will be when we get it figured out based upon the 61% per 100 right now. You will get a rate number that equals that number with the assessment that you have. We're living in a crazy time. We've never lived in this, the world that you and I grew up in no longer exists and it's not coming back. This is the new normal, this is the way things are going. And it's, it is what it is. And it will be, your rate will be adjusted to that. Now, is there gonna be a tax increase? Can't even answer that, probably. To adjust to that, I do not know what it is. It's not gonna be no 55%. I can tell you that. But it will be there. Now, in just a moment, I can stand here and talk for another 20 minutes and I'm gonna tell you the same thing that all the other supervisors have told you. We will adjust the rate and it will be worked down to where everybody can do it. Is everybody gonna be happy? No. No, it's not gonna happen. Now, if you go on to, for you folks, I know that we had a wrong number on our webpage. But if you want to schedule a hearing with the assessor and talk about an appeal for your property, the right phone number is 540-489-0700, extension 2396. extension 2396. It's between 9:00 and 5:00, Monday through Friday. And that's when you can call and you can actually talk to the assessor. It's right here in this building, in the Commissioner's office next door. If you wanna go over there right now and schedule your appointment, when you leave, they're open. And you can go over there and take care of that. And it's scheduled only, it has to be by schedule. They're not doing any walk-in appointments because they're covered up. And you can go over there and talk to them. Then at the end of it, you can, we will have, as a matter of fact, I'm gonna stop right now. Mr. Whitlow's got a tentative schedule. That's when you can come right here, you get your three minutes right there. Have state your name and your address. You'll get your three minutes to say what you got to say and you want to say. And that will start, well, he's gonna give you the schedule, I'll shut up and make him do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd ask our staff, I know on the scrolling, the screen on the PowerPoint that's scrolling, if they may maybe take the scroll off and we can actually go to the screen. If they can do that.
But since it's me to talk, it's gonna be the same thing.
Where everyone can have that and those that are watching online can see that too. So, of course, today's a special call meeting and the public can participate in the public comment period each month, the Board of Supervisors meetings. That's the third Tuesday of each month. That's after all the business of the day, that's at 6 o'clock in the evenings and after all the public hearings and other businesses completed, that's the time for public comment, the third Tuesday of the month. And that next one's scheduled for February the 20th. The board meeting starts, the regular business of the board starts at 3 o'clock. Matt, if you could go back to that slide too, please, that's fun. The regular meeting again starts at 3 o'clock where regular business is held. And then at 6 o'clock again, after that is time for public comment. There is a budget work session scheduled for February the 22nd at 3 PM. Of course, the public's welcome to attend. And then tentatively, the current county and school budgets are scheduled to be presented to the board on March the 5th at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. During the month of March, after that budget is presented, there will likely be budget work sessions. So please stay tuned. For additional work sessions, we will share that information for you and how you can be kept up to date with alerts. Of course, a public hearing is always required for the county budget and tax rates. That will be scheduled for the week of March the 25th through the 29th. One of those evenings, most likely Monday, March the 25th, that will be held here at 6 o'clock. And then there's a required reassessment hearing. And that will be the week of April 8th through the 12th. And then that same week will be the schedule for the budget adoption and the tax rate. So all of that information is there, we'll keep that on the county website. And Maderlin, if you could go to the next slide there. And of course, public comment, as the chairman has said, you can go to the county website, that's the best way, franklincountyva.gov, there's public comment forms there. You can also write a letter to the Board of Supervisors. On the county website, there are email addresses and of course, to our board clerk for further contact information. Also, check out social media, we do keep up with Facebook and Twitter with the board meetings and public hearings for public comment so that you can get information back to the county. Mr. Chairman?
Okay. All right, with that being said, we will have the public when it comes in and you can do that. Now, this board, I wanna make it very clear for the rumors. The budget is set for this year until June, the end of June of this year. The new budget starts in July. That's what we're working on right now. This board has made it adamant that we're going to work diligently on the rates to get it down to where it's equal and fair. And this board is behind and is equally behind the school board to keep your schools going. But it's the decision of the school board, we're there. We cannot at this point say where the money's gonna come from because we don't know where it's gonna come from. If we got to make up the downfall of the 3.7 million. But this board, every one of us has talked up here and has set our head. We are prepared, we will back the schools and we'll back them there with your tax dollars. With your tax dollars, that's where it's come. Ladies and gentlemen, we thank you- Ladies and gentlemen, we thank you for attending today, we thank you for your interest in county government. Some of you, but I mean, hopefully we quieted some of these rumors that everybody feels the same. Thank you for coming, and hope to see you, I'm sure we will, on the 20th, 6 o'clock.